I would like to call this meeting to order for the City Council meeting of October 20th, 2020. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero.
Here.
Councilmember Moats.
Here.
Councilmember Soto. Here. Councilmember Waterfield.
Here.
And Madam Mayor Patino.
Here. First item on the agenda this evening is a presentation of the Helen Putnam Award. Mr. Vandykamp.
Good evening.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, staff, and audience. Tonight we can celebrate some positivity. We could all use some during this very challenging year. One of the best functions of my job is I get to go out and tell the public about a lot of the great things that our city is doing for the community, and that is exactly what's taking place tonight. It was a real team effort. We were thrilled to receive a prestigious statewide award for city business relations. This is the Helen Putnam Award. It's given out annually by the League of California Cities. So tonight we have a brief slideshow which includes a video, and there's a little surprise at the end for everyone as well. So this is the Patch, which is run up at Los Flores Ranch Park. Congratulations to all the hundreds and hundreds of Santa Maria area teens that have done this program since its inception in 2017. This is, I'll show you a little video here in a moment. This is, in their own words, this is a video put together a few years ago starring Karina Passata.
The Patch was due to be experimental pumpkin patch located at Los Flores Ranch Park. They're partnered with the Santa Maria Area Federation Parks Department and the Dairy Garden Parks. The Patch team founded it for its program that high school students could participate in for no cost, that allows them to get hands-on experience.
The Patch helped me in my internship, and I had to help her in my, funding an interworking industry, showing how like, in all these activities, I'm flooded and brown, how like, affect like certain problems.
A lot of our students have a desire to work in agricultural field, but the Patch provides them with commitment, leadership, and work experience that will enable them to have a path they choose to take.
At the Patch, there are reports of student involvement. We offer outreach, hard case, and recidivism.
But I like most of what we have part of the Patch team is obviously being able to communicate with others and learning a lot about the business sector. I didn't really have any hands-on experience until I started working in the Patch.
It has community service hours, and it allows you to earn scholarships and gain hours.
So we're going to be open Thursday through Sunday. We're going to be opening during the last week of September and throughout all of October. We're going to be select pumpkins. We're going to have many pumpkin packs, and we're also going to have corn maize, and then we're going to also have like, different events going on. There's going to be vendors coming, and we're having activities.
Our main event in October provides these students with the opportunity to showcase all of their hard work, and an event like this is greatly needed in our community, and we can't wait to see this October.
So that's something that the Patch group put together a couple of years ago, and the program is going very strong. It is, I'm going to try to advance to a couple. So for those of you who are not yet familiar with the Patch, it's a terrific opportunity for younger people in the Santa Maria area to gain hands-on experience in the agricultural sector. And in this area, that's about one out of every three or four jobs. There are really not that many programs outside of the Patch that cater to high school. Of course, when you get older, you go to Allen Hancock College, they have a terrific viticulture and agriculture program. So this really fills that void, and it's a public-private partnership. We are working with a number of businesses that donate a lot of expertise, their time, their energy to help train the students, and we have seen more than 400 local high school students go through the program. So they learn everything about planting and marketing, so you can see that it's hands-on. They get their hands dirty. They get out into the dirt. They learn the best techniques. They make friendships. They network. There's a lot of leadership. There's public speaking. And of course, in October, and they're doing this again, but I must add, with all the appropriate safety protocols for the pandemic, and you can see that it's very successful from the staff report. They've, they provide scholarships. They give a lot back to the community. We have a, Mr. Stillwell is displaying the beautiful plaque that we received from the League of California Cities. This was done this year virtually, again because of the pandemic. There are 482 cities in California, and all of them are able to participate in this program. This is a program that is very competitive, and we are very fortunate to receive this award, and it speaks loudly to the efforts of the business community. And I think we can, I won't want to go to the wrong item, but we have, I'm going to click a little bit trying to find the right. I think we've got a little something here. This is the, this is a video showing the reactions of the students when they learned of the award.
And the award is amazing. It's amazing.
That was shared with the League of Cities when they did their virtual presentation. So again, I would just like to thank all the businesses and the staff, and especially the teenagers who are making this such a success. And if you would like to learn more about the Patch or go visit, you can check out the website. Really simple, thepatchsantamaria.com, and they have a map to find your golden pumpkin and other goodies up at the ranch. And they also make an effort to make it affordable for all families. So it's a place that you can get a great deal and make some good friends. So we're really pleased to show this team effort. In this difficult year, Santa Maria is, is one of the best cities in the state in this regard. Thank you. There is a parking fee. It's very modest, and we also have a, some social distancing. Everyone has to wear the masks, and the staff is fully trained on how to keep everybody safe.
And do you ever have food to eat as well? I know it's in there, but there are honey sticks out, but we can still do things like that.
I'm not sure if that video was done about two years ago, but it still holds up pretty well. We've made some adjustments. We, we are unable to do the corn maize this year because it takes an awful lot of volunteer help, and that was not accessible. I'm not sure if we're doing the honey sticks, but there are a lot of goodies up there this time. And this year, we have, we stat a great turnout of about 171 students were enrolled.
And you said it's, it's open from Thursday through Sunday?
That, I can check. I would just ask people to go to the website to be sure of the days. It was, again, the video was a couple of years back.
Okay.
But it is open right now.
Yeah.
Maybe not right now, but it is open this week, this month.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vandykamp. That was great, especially the last part of it. That was great, really great. Did they have any doubts they were going to get the award?
It's a high-energy group.
Briefly on that point, it is a very competitive award. It's a statewide award only handed out to the select programs once a year at the statewide conference. And they showed those videos at the conference of the award winners and of the program. And ours just really stands out, as you can see there. I mean, you look at some of them across the state, and it, ours really highlight the value of our people. We always say what makes Santa Maria great is the people, and you can just see the enthusiasm of it, the experience the kids were able to get. Having 171 of them involved this year is huge, too. So just a wonderful recognition for a wonderful program.
Thank you. Yes.
I'm looking at their website, and they said 10/24/20 will be our last day open for the 2020 season, and it's open from 10:00 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. $5 parking.
Okay. So that's this Friday, is what you've said?
Yep, Friday.
Okay.
Friday and Saturday, so Saturday would be the last day.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So remember, everyone, please speak into the microphone. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the public comment period. Madam Clerk, could you please read that criteria for the public comment portion of this agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on the printed agenda this evening. Those who are in attendance via our Zoom, please raise your hand at this time if you wish to speak during this part of the session. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given. However, state law does not allow action to be taken on matters not on the printed agenda this evening. And it appears that we do not have any raised hands at the moment, but we do have one written communication from Harry Hydros. He expressed his disapproval of the no parking zone in front of the Alx Lodge. A copy was provided to the City Council at the dais this evening, and we still have no hands raised at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we move on, Mr. Stillwell, did you wish to make any comments? Okay. Moving on to the consent calendar, Madam Clerk, could you please read item number three?
Routine items are presented for City Council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the, on the request of council members.
Does anyone have items they wish to pull for discussion?
If not, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the consent calendar as submitted.
Right up.
So I have a motion to approve the consent calendar and a second. Having heard the motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero.
Aye.
Councilmember Soto.
Aye.
Councilmember Moats.
Aye.
And Madam Mayor Patino.
Aye.
Okay, next we have a presentation. Mr. Stillwell, would you like to do the introductions?
Sure. By way of introduction, the, this is the year that the city's electricity will begin being provided by Monterey Bay Community Power, which is changing their name to the Central Coast Community Energy. And this is the, on an annual basis, they'll provide updates on their energy supply and how, status of what their operations are. As we're entering into the transition for Santa Maria and Northern Santa Barbara County residents, this is also an opportunity for staff from that organization to be able to help us understand what's coming down the road, what people will see difference on their bills, and what the new energy supply will be that will be coming to Santa Maria and the region. And I think we have JR on the line? Is that right?
Yes, we do.
So yeah, and he'll, he can give a presentation on the status of the organization and where we're going from here. And one thing we want to do is, we anticipate questions from the public about what this change means to us and, and to our energy supply, and to our rates, and what changes we'll see in the billing. And so we thought it was important for us to be able to get this presentation. They've been very proactive in providing information to us that we, that they think will be questions that we'll all receive from folks in our community, and better to over-communicate it for us to all have that information. So if residents or people in our community ask us about the change, we'll be able to answer it as well, and as well as referring to them to additional information.
Okay, Mr. Killogrew.
Yes, hi. Can everybody hear me okay?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Killogrew, if you wouldn't mind, you can go ahead and present your slides on the full display.
Okay. Can everybody hear me okay first?
Yes.
Yes, they can.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Mayor Patino and honorable council members. I just want to make sure that you all can see my screen. How about now?
There you go, sir.
Excellent. So again, thank you very much for the invitation, City Manager Stillwell, and Mayor Patino, and Vice Mayor Cordero, as well as Councilmember Moats, Soto, and Waterfield. It's been a little while since we connected in person when I came down to Santa Maria Bunch last year to connect not only with businesses and residents in Santa Maria, but also the City Council. We just applaud the city's leadership in joining this agency and really helping to kind of set the bar in terms of helping to bring on the rest of Santa Barbara County onto this agency. So as City Manager Stillwell mentioned, this is a two-part presentation in the sense that we provide each one of our 33 member agencies now with an annual update, but the focus of tonight is just reintroducing us to the great city of Santa Maria, as well as kind of laying out the nuts and bolts and the logistics about this upcoming enrollment. So how does CCA work? The acronym is Community Choice Aggregation. Many folks have probably seen this slide before, but I always like to set the tone in terms of establishing who we are, what we do, and how we operate with the investor-owned utility. So the model works based on Assembly Bill 117 that allows cities or counties to actually create and enter into a joint powers agreement with each other to go out and source electricity on the wholesale market on behalf of their constituents. They still get to leverage the benefit and the infrastructure of the investor-owned utility, whether it's in PG&E or SCE land. They still handle the delivery as well as the billing, and we like to say you get the same service but get greater value and at more competitive pricing. So we are now Central Coast Community Energy, effective September 4th of this year. We actually officially changed our name with the Secretary of State. Our Joint Powers Authority Agreement now reads solely Central Coast Community Energy. When you all got to know me last year in our agency, we were Monterey Bay Community Power, because, but because we did expand down into most of San Luis Obispo County and now virtually all of Santa Barbara County, our collective board, which comprises of elected officials and city executives from across the Central Coast, we did all feel it was time for us to change our name. So from September 4th moving forward, please call us Central Coast Community Energy. We like to use the acronym 3CE for short, and our new website is 3cenergy.org. And I did also want to mention that we have a website that's fully in Spanish. It's www.3cenergy.org/ES for us to engage with folks who use Spanish as their primary language. I did want to provide an update since we, it's been a little bit since we connected with the City Council in Santa Maria. We did start with Humble Roots back in the Monterey Bay region with the three counties and the 16 cities there within, but fast forward to the end of 2019, we actually added on another 13 jurisdictions. So that includes San Luis Obispo, Morro Bay, Paso Robles, Grover Beach, Pismo Beach, Arroyo Grande, and then within Santa Barbara County, the county itself, as well as Carpinteria, Golita, Solvang, Santa Maria, of course, and Guadalupe. And actually, most recently this year, the city of Gilton joined our agency. So we are now 33 strong representing the entire Central Coast. Our governance structure, this is really the, the great model of community choice aggregation. It allows for elected officials and city executives or county executives to serve on respective boards to help with the decision-making process. We have three boards, and again, we are very grateful to have Mayor Patino sit on our policy board as the official from Santa Maria. And then on the operations board, City Manager Stillwell sits in the capacity to help with operational decisions around procurement. But we also do have a community advisory council, which now has 15 representatives spanning the entire Central Coast region. And actually, we newly have appointed John Hughes from the great city of Santa Maria to be our newest community advisory council member here. So it's really great to see that Santa Maria has representation across all three of our boards in terms of who we are, what we're doing, and really how we, how we're trying to reinvest and really drive value for the Central Coast, especially in Santa Maria. I did want to highlight some of our accomplishments. Folks can probably read off a lot of the great things that we've been doing. I say it kind of reluctantly considering that we're in the midst of a pandemic and a lot of folks are struggling. But I did want to mention that something recent has occurred that actually has set this agency above every other community choice aggregation agency in the state, such that as of Friday of last week, we actually received an A-stable credit rating from S&amp;P. It's the first time any CCA has received an A reading, especially from S&amp;P, which is the most, I'd say, respected credit raging agency in the world. So it's really great to see that our financial stability and our kind of commitment to operational control and operational investment has allowed us to get this first and pretty historic credit rating. I did want to mention that since the last time we connected, you know, this pandemic did head, and it hit folks from all walks of life, but Mayor Patino was actually on our board when we did move forward with this direction, which was to reduce all electric generation rates by 50% for the months of May and June. That actually allowed for a little over $24 million of financial relief to all customers. So some of the statistics show that residential customers got about $6.5 million of financial relief, business customers got about $11 million, and then even the ag customers got a little over $5 million, just over in those two months. We did, we are going to be able to bring back some of that revenue by not providing as much of a discount for the rest of the year, but we are still lower than PG&E moving forward with our 2% discount. In terms of energy procurement, we've been fast and responsible in terms of going out and sourcing clean and renewable resources. This is just a highlight of some of the projects that we've done. As you can see, all of our projects to date are either through solar plus storage or battery storage and geothermal. The one project that we're really excited about is the Cal Flat Battery Energy Storage Project, which is 60 megawatts of battery storage that's actually going to be located in South Monterey County. So it's really another great way that we're looking to drive value in the region and make sure that we can source energy responsibly and reliably for the grid. But one of the great things that's come from this agency this year is the leadership on how can we develop the most affordable and impactful procurement strategy for our customers? So how can we go out to the wholesale market and really affect change, but make sure that rates are stable, rates are affordable, and they're competitive? And we're going to do that through our new pathway to 100% clean and renewable energy by 2030. That's actually 15 years ahead of the state's goal of having a zero-carbon or 100% clean and renewable grid by 2045. And actually, we can do that more affordably than our current strategy at the moment. So that's really going to be able to drive us further value and ensure we can stay as competitive as possible. So when you think about how we're affecting change at the, at the kind of regional level when it relates to grid emissions, we also are focusing on accelerating programs to help reduce the use of fossil fuels in vehicles and homes and businesses, but also evaluating how we can unlock the potential of local energy resources and local energy storage to make sure that we can monetize that as well as our customers. One of the great value adds that we do bring to Santa Maria, as well as the Central Coast, is our energy programs. We set aside 3% of our gross revenue to focus on programs that can help kind of move the needle in terms of electrification, fuel switching, and resiliency. These are some of the programs that we are going to launch this year, but I did want to just focus on technically three. There's going to be a new electric vehicle incentive program that's in partnership with both air districts in San Luis Obispo and Santa Barbara, as well as our Southern CCA Clean Power Alliance, who operates in Ventura County, to bring state funding to provide fast charging infrastructure, as well as Level 2 infrastructure for, for businesses across the Central Coast. We're also going to be expanding our residential electrification grant program. That's actually going to help both affordable, single-family, and market-rate homes to go all-electric and not put any gas lines in. And then last but certainly not least, we had a lot of success partnering with our local air district to provide six no-cost electric school buses. We're actually looking to expand that opportunity down in San Luis Obispo and Santa Barbara County for the communities and customers that are enrolled with us. I did want to mention, resiliency is on a lot of folks' mind. You know, we've had some, we've been flirting with some public safety power shut-offs across the service area, but we still do have a, an open fund called the Uninterruptible Power Supply Fund that, once the city of Santa Maria enrolls, they would be eligible for the public sector financing, which we have set aside $20 million for low-cost financial support to help build backup energy supply at your critical facilities. So whether it's water, wastewater treatment, treatment plants, city hall, jails, even public hospitals, public stools, public schools, we have that opportunity available for the public sector. And we're still evaluating opportunities to support the, the private sector, whether it be, you know, the ag sector or whatnot with low-intrance financing, where we would provide a loan guarantee for those loans. So now I get to pivot to the, the more exciting part, which is about Santa Maria and how this enrollment is going to occur starting in January of 2021. So I did want to provide a highlight that the city has, of all of its residence, commercials, and agricultural accounts, about close to 39,000 customers, but that accounts to, and this number is pretty staggering, well over 400 million kilowatt-hours of annual consumption. So Santa Maria is definitely one of our largest cities, but actually, I think the second-largest city behind the city of Salinas in terms of annual consumption. Now, in terms of the enrollment, our staff worked tirelessly in collaboration with our city and county representatives to develop this 3CE committee enrollment plan. And what that does is kind of outline what are the key strategies and tactics we're going to move forward to have a successful launch. And again, our goal is to make sure that we enroll customers successfully, they have enough information to make the right decision, and we have a smooth and great transition into the service that is going to be starting in January. So a couple of key takeaways, we are actually now actively reaching out to the top customers in Santa Maria and scheduling one-on-one conversations to go over their bills. We also are working with key stakeholder groups in the region to do personal, or sorry, virtual presentations. I know we've already connected with the Santa Maria Valley Chamber a few times to get to know that group and make some presentations, but we're also working on regional advertising, as well as the required mailers that we have to send out by law. But then additionally, we've created a suite of digital resources that I'll be sharing with City Council after this presentation tonight, just about kind of fact sheets and things they can distribute to your network, and they are both in English and Spanish. And then we're creating a suite of videos, how-to videos, what the enrollment means, how to understand your video, how to understand your bill, and both of those will be in English and Spanish. And then certainly, we have our call center available to answer any billing or customer inquiry needs. And we now are going to be scheduling three separate net energy metering enrollments for folks who have solar on their roof. I did want to remind everybody, when the virtual transition happens, customers will be enrolled in our primary service offering, 3C Choice. That product is a mixture of renewable portfolio standard products like wind, solar, geothermal, and biomass. But the great thing to remember about this, this product is it will become 60% clean and renewable by 2025, and 100% clean and renewable by 2030. So really rapidly moving that towards that 100% goal, but doing that responsefully and not, and doing it in a way that's risk averse for many market fluctuations. Now for the customer enrollment. As I mentioned last year, by law, we, we only have to send four notices. One notice 60 days before enrollment, one notice 30 days before enrollment, you have the virtual transition on the meter, metered date in January, then we have one following notice in February or 30 days after enrollment, and then one notice 60 days after enrollment in March. That, by law, is the only thing we have to do, so all the other great outreach and engagement around advertising and doing virtual presentations and developing resources, that's entirely on our dime in an effort to make sure this is a successful enrollment for not only Santa Maria, but the other communities that are enrolling in January. Again, fully, fully transparent, customers can opt out at any time and at, and at no cost during this 150-day enrollment period. But should they decide to opt out after this enrollment period, there is an administrative fee that we've been transparent about since day one. So it's $5 for each residential account and then $25 for commercial accounts. This is a new slide, so I apologize. I did want to show folks the bill, and I want to just mention that I will send this slide deck to council afterwards, but this is a before and after in terms of what the first page would look like, and this is usually where a lot of the, the questions come from. So effectively, we do end up replacing the electric generation charges on the PG&E bill. So on this one image on the left, you'll see before 3CE enrollment. All you get is a current electric charges, and that's one bundled bill of delivery and electric generation charges. But then when you see bundled bill of delivery and electric generation charges. But then when you see your first bill from, from PG&E, you actually see our charges on the first page of your bill. So basically, we're separating those out now so that PG&E can remit and collect payment on our behalf. So it's a very simple and straightforward fix, and it becomes, and it shows up on the front page of the bill.
Hi, JR, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
The council can't see these particular slides, so if you wouldn't just mind providing them by email, they are presented to the Zoom. People who are viewing it by Zoom or live TV, the council is just unable to see these in, in-house.
Yes, and I deeply apologize that. I, I promise I will send the slides that include these two snapshots, but I just wanted to make sure that folks could see that. So my apologies, council, but you will be certainly receiving this after, after today. And then finally, just a snapshot of how it's broken down in terms of before the enrollment. Basically, everything's bundled into delivery and generation charges on the PG&E bill, but now you actually have an individual page that outlines all of our electric generation charges for a little more transparency. So at this point, I think I'm getting back to the original slide deck that I shared with council. So we did want to highlight again that net energy metering customers, there are about 7,000 that are enrolling across our entire service area. I think if, if I'm not correct, there's probably about 800 or 1,000 net energy metering customers in Santa Maria that are going to enroll. So we're basically going to have three enrollment periods, April, July, and October, such that it aligns up with their true-up a month to minimize any sort of adverse impacts that will come from transitioning for our, into our service. But we're actually going to be sending an additional customer letter, an additional email notification. We're going to host customer webinars for NEM customers and make sure everybody's aware of, of what's happening in terms of becoming a shared customer as it relates to net energy metering. Now, in terms of the 2021 enrollment timeline, I did want to kind of break it up in a way that, in segments that make sense. So right now, or at least since in September and October, we've been connecting with our member agencies, including the city of Santa Maria, reaching out to key community organizations, business organizations, environmental groups, as well as community and business leaders, just to introduce ourselves and kind of lay out what's happening and share information. November and December, as I mentioned, will be about the enrollment notifications, outreach. We are hosting a series of virtual office hours in November for customers to be able to sign on from their own convenience and be able to ask questions about enrollment. We're actually hosting two open public forums on December 8th at 6:00 PM and December 10th at 6:00 PM, ones in English and ones in Spanish. We certainly hope you all can join us for that. And then in January of 2021, we move into that virtual transition. We'll have some sort of ceremonial virtual flip, the switch event, just to commemorate the, the move to Central Coast Community Energy. And then in February and March, we move through the remaining batch of mailers, as well as continued outreach and advertising, and then into the, the three-part NEM enrollment for the remaining customers. And on that note, I'm going to be wrapping up my presentation now. I did want to mention that we have opened up a satellite office in San Luis Obispo back in April. We actually have three staff members that are based in the South Central Coast, serving customers in the Santa Barbara and San Luis Obispo region. One's going to be working with our key accounts, another one's working with our ag and business customers, and then another staff member who's going to be working with the disadvantaged, low-income communities, especially Spanish-speaking communities, to really make sure we can get out and connect with all of our great customers from all walks of life. Our pathway to 100% clean and renewable energy is an incredible opportunity for us to chart a course towards reliable, affordable, and, and responsible energy that's being put on the grid. We are going to be leveraging our community advisory council members to help with outreach around our program development, as well as we now offer non-voting seat participation on both our operations and policy boards for communities that are not, are not actually seated on our board just yet, but still could join and voice their opinions about the direction that the agency is going. And then last but certainly not least, I did want to show folks that 2021 is going to be a very active year for us. We have over 140,000 customers enrolling across 12 communities, and that leads into that enrollment for the city of Buellton in early 2021. So we've got a very busy and active schedule, but we do appreciate the leadership from the great city of Santa Maria, and we look forward to working with you and making this a successful enrollment. And again, if, if folks or anybody has questions, feel free to email us, info@3ce.org. Our call center can handle folks in different languages, so please give us a call at 888-909-6277. And please follow us on the myriad of social media platforms, and also join our newsletter or board agenda notification list, just to stay up to date about all the great work that this agency is doing in partnership with the city. So on that note, I would conclude my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Sure, Mr. Kiligrew. Ms. Waterfield has a question.
Good evening, Mr. Kiligrew, and thank you for that presentation. I really appreciate that. My question is, and this is something that I will hang on to for the rest of my life, is my gas stove and my gas dryer. And also, with the restaurants that use gas stoves, that's something that just cannot be changed. So what are you going to do about allowing those that have them, keep them?
Yes, and thank you, Councilmember Waterfield. I distinctly remember your comment last year, and we respect that comment. Again, we don't, we don't create ordinances. We, we're basically an agency that's trying to develop resources and investments that are aligned with our mission. But if you love your gas stove, hang on to it. I mean, we're, we're not in the business of, of getting into your home and actually doing that. But if you do want to evaluate induction cooking or electric dryers, I would certainly encourage you to check it out. But again, right now, it's on a customer-by-customer basis, so...
Okay, so, so then what you're, what you're offering is, we, we are not going to be forced to accept this. We opt in at our own choosing at any time.
So for the programs, you, you're allowed to opt into the programs that we have, but when the city joined 3CE last year, and when we filed our implementation plan, all the customers in the city of Santa Maria will be enrolled in service, and then they have to opt out. So I just want to make that clear. It's an opt-out model. It's not an opt-in.
Okay, so then right now, those that have their gas stoves are automatically opt in, and they have to opt out?
Well, it's, this is just for electricity service, so we have nothing to do with the gas part of the bill. This is strictly for electricity service.
Perfect, because I think you made a comment, unless I misunderstood you, about 20, in 2030 to 2040, you wanted to make sure that we were all using renewables and there wouldn't be any gas available?
Yeah, so the clarification is for electricity service, we are going to go out and procure clean and renewable energy to serve the electric, the electric needs of our customers in the Central Coast. So whether or not a customer still has gas lines in their home, whether they're cooking and gas, that's a whole nother thing. That's a whole nother conversation. We're just, our, our business is about electricity. We hope to electrify as much as possible, but customers will still, still have that ability to have both electrical needs for their home, as well as gas needs for their home. So I hope that clarifies that.
It does. And then on another note, the UPS, the Uninterrupted Power Supply, I, I don't know if I quite understood that. You had mentioned if the city opts in, and it almost sounded like if the city doesn't opt in, it's going to be very expensive for customers.
Yeah, so I'm just going to jump back to the slides so everybody sees this. So this is a, this is, this is, this is a fund that our board set up that basically allows a public agency, so it could be a city or a county, it could be a public school, a public hospital, or a public water or wastewater district. And if they have a critical load that they need to serve with like backup power supply, it could be a natural gas generator, a diesel generator, if they want to do battery storage, you know, we're very much technology agnostic. So basically, this would be if the city of Santa Maria had a particular site that they've had interruptions due to public safety power shut-offs or anything else. Do they need backup supply to help keep like the lights on or something like that? They could apply for low-cost financing to help develop and bring that technology to that particular site. So it's customer-specific, not so much for the entire community.
How is that 20 million funded?
So that was funded, that was taken entirely from our ratepayers. So what happened is, is we are entirely rate-based, so all of our revenue that comes from our customers, it's built up into these sections where they pay for the, the procurement that we go out and source on our behalf of our customers. It covers administrative costs, it covers the amount of money we have to set aside for our rate stabilization fund, and then the last little bit is for our energy programs, which is 3%, and that's how we build up our rate-making, and that's how we collect revenue from our customers. So this $20 million was basically just set aside from our rate stabilization fund as, 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 as a mechanism to provide low-cost financing. So it basically acts as a revolving fund for the public sector.
So the ratepayers actually pay for this, then?
They, they had paid for it. They're not paying for it anymore right now.
Will they continue?
It's set aside, yeah.
Will, will they continue to pay for it if it gets low?
That will be up to our board. So our board would, is the one that would decide whether or not, say, well, the thing is, it's a revolving fund, so basically, it becomes a self-refulfilling prophecy. So say if theoretically, we got 20 of our cities and counties that said, we all want to use this $20 million to basically fund these 20 projects, they pay us back at about 1.8%. So the money would get paid back by the customers that would participate in the program.
And then the board sets the interest rates?
Yeah, that, that was, yes, our board has set the interest rate. Right now, it's at 1.8%. That was basically, I believe, what was consistent with the best practice that we had available to us.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Senator Mayor. Mr. Kiligrew, is it Kiligrew or Kilagrew?
Kilagrew, sir.
Kilagrew. Mr. Kiligrew, I think I asked something similar to this when you were here, but what does this do, basically, what does this do for the average homeowner that has already installed solar in their home? And we have a number of customers in the city that have installed solar in their home, and even some larger businesses.
Yeah, so by and large, it provides them an option to be able to evaluate what is the best product for them, essentially. You know, we cannot say unequivocally that every single NEM customer will be better off with us. The majority of them are going to be better off with us because we have a more favorable rate structure in terms of net surplus compensation. But overall, it would be up to each one of those customers to evaluate what is the right fit for them, and then go from there. Conversely, on the side of just customers that don't have solar on their roof, they're just a, you know, a, a normal, everyday electric customer, we provide a 2% discount, so customers will be saving money starting in January.
Okay, thank you very much.
Dr. Moats?
Yes, thanks for your presentation, Mr. Kiligrew. I had a question. As we go forward, transitioning away from fossil fuels to electric power, our governor wants to, in the next 15 or 20 years, require all new automobiles purchased in the state of California to be electric. This is going to greatly increase the demand for electric power. Are you going to be able to provide enough power for us going into the future?
Well, I, I would hope to have a crystal ball for that, but I think honestly, we are all very optimistic about the future. If you look at the current track record of when we put out RFOs for utility-scale renewable energy, we sometimes get 50, 60, 70 different projects. So we certainly don't see any shortage of potential opportunities to build up and scale up utility-scale clean and renewable resources, and especially with new technologies coming out with battery storage. We're actually looking at, we actually just launched the first long-duration storage RFO for about 500 megawatts of long, basically eight hours of more. So you basically can store energy and then dispatch it for a consistent period of eight hours or more. So I think as we kind of move away from fossil fuels in our vehicles, again, we're looking at a 15-year period. It's just for new passenger and light-duty vehicles. There's still no mandate for heavy-duty vehicles just yet in that sense. So I think in the next 15 years, there's ample time for us to be able to look at a variety of solutions, not only at the utility scale, but how folks can optimize, you know, onsite generation, distributed energy resources, so we can have a nice mixture of solutions to meet that kind of incoming demand. The other thing to realize is that energy efficiency is another great tool. If you look at the kind of the per capita consumption in the state of California, even though we've seen wild, a lot of growth in terms of population, the per consumption of electricity has actually gone down. So I think there's, there's some hope that we're moving in the right direction. But again, it's not happening overnight. None of these transitions happen immediately, so they're done very methodically, and they're done, you know, using the lens of risk to make sure that we can manage that effectively, but also deliver electricity to the grid reliability, reliability. But I think the one thing to realize is that is a statewide effort, and all of us are active participants in that. So whether it's SCE or PG&E or the 20 other CCAs, we're all kind of working together to make sure that we can provide that reliable power to the grid as we move towards, you know, zero emission vehicles. So I'm definitely, we're definitely bullish on the type of opportunities we're going to be bringing, even if we do see a really spike in electric vehicle adoption, as well as electrification in homes. So I, I don't see any site where we're not going to be able to meet that, especially if we move towards additional solutions that can help kind of reduce consumption as we're adding consumption at the same time.
Thank you, Mr. Kiligrew. Just as a follow-up, I think that a nuclear power plant at Diablo Canyon produces something like 15 or 20% of the electric power in the state of California? So that's going to go completely offline. So not only is the demand going to go up, but the production of electricity might go down. Is nuclear power considered a renewable, renewable resource? And are there any plans to try and develop new nuclear facilities or try and rehab the Diablo Canyon plant? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Boats. To my knowledge, in California, I'm not aware of any, any, any efforts to either create a new nuclear power plant or anything like that. Again, when it goes off in 2025, it's about 2,000 megawatts, and I think it, it serves about nine or 10% of the load of California. So still significant. But again, that plant, you know, again, was constructed, it was, it wasn't constructed correctly, it was put on a fault line, and then there was a whole myriad of other things that kind of led to the CPUC and a collective network of stakeholders to decide to close down Diablo Canyon. I know it's a, it's a big job creator here. It does create clean energy. It's not deemed renewable, but the state of California made this decision a long time ago. But we're really excited about the type of technologies that are coming to help kind of offset that. And as you know, the, the, as I mentioned, the long-duration storage, while it's not 24/7, to be able to kind of scale up 500 megawatts, which is one quarter of the output of Diablo Canyon by 2026, is just one solution that our network of CCAs is bringing forward. And we're actually scheduled that hopefully by 2030, we'll actually be bringing on another 500 megawatts of battery storage. So I think when you kind of look at all the different players that are bringing on new resources, we're going to be able to fulfill that gap. I can't tell you if it's going to be immediately. But I think the other thing to remember is that the KISO, which is the grid operator, the CPUC, you know, they are going to be keeping gas plants on for the not-so-distant future for reliability. So I think that's something that we all have to kind of enter into, into open eyes in terms of just how the grid actually works versus the way it's kind of sometimes articulated to folks. So there will be natural gas on the grid, but our job is to help kind of put as much clean and renewable resources to help reduce that need to keep those gas plants on, but make sure we can do it reliably.
Ms. Waterfield had a question.
You mentioned battery storage. What does battery storage look like across this region? And how is it going to be disposed of once the battery use is gone? Do we have, are we going to have to restructure our landfills or go to a certain landfill like Kettleman City to get rid of these batteries?
That's a great question, Councilmember Waterfield. So yeah, right now, the, the primary technology is lithium ion, and there are actually extraordinarily robust recycling efforts. So, and usually batteries last summer about maybe eight to 12 years, usually around 10 years. And then think about it, it's the same thing And then think about it, it's the same thing with solar panels, they run until about 20 years, then have to get replaced. But there is a very robust secondary market to be reclaimed and reused, so it's not, though, they're just going to be dumped in a landfill. A lot of the developers that are bringing forth these technologies are being very thoughtful about the lifecycle analysis in terms of what that's going to take. So, you know, that's kind of the thought process that's going into deploying these resources moving forward.
Ms. Soto?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question is about the outreach efforts that are going to take place pre-enrollment and during the enrollment. I saw in one of the slides that there's collaboration happening with community benefit organizations, particularly or specifically with energy or, yeah, energy nonprofit orgs. And so my question is about how are you going to be reaching out to community members who may speak another language aside from Spanish or English?
Yeah, that's a great point. I think if we do run in, when we run into that situation, we're going to be working to help create materials for them, to make sure that they can be met in their own language. So I think a lot of that will be just leveraging the groups that we're connecting with. And if you know of groups that we may not be engaging with, that you'd like to introduce us to, we'd be more than happy to do that and make sure we can get to all the necessary groups in Santa Maria to make sure that they're aware of the change.
Okay, yeah, I can send you their contact info.
Great, thank you very much.
And, Mr. Killer-Grew, we have a large Mesteco population here, and the language is not a written language. So quite often, we have to remind people when they're going to do outreach here in Santa Maria that it won't, it has to be oral and not written. So, but you can also reach out to our city manager because we work with this group all the time. And I do have someone with a request to speak on this item.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have Mr. John Hughes, who wishes to speak. Just a moment.
Okay.
Mr. Hughes, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. Yes, my name is John Hughes. I'm a local North County resident. I've been here for over 40 years and have worked in the area, in the electrical construction industry, for over 30 years. And as JR pointed out, I've been recently appointed to the 3CE Energy Citizen Advisory Council, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to introduce myself and let you know that I'm available here locally for any questions regarding the 3CE energy programs, or if you wanted to continue with any of the discussions on these programs and the presentation that JR just did, just a wonderful presentation, and I just wanted to let you know that I'm available for you.
Thank you very much. Any further questions? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Killer-Grew, for the wonderful presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We look forward to seeing you soon at our next board reading. And to all the councilmembers in Santa Maria, it's great to connect with you again, even in a virtual setting. It's been a pleasure collaborating with the city of Santa Maria, and we look forward to a very successful enrollment.
Thank you. So let's go on to the next item is appointments. Oh, before I forget, at the last policy meeting, it was, there was a group of people that were, that wanted to consider nuclear, but the majority said no, though it is clean energy and it is renewable, they don't want to consider nuclear at all. Because we had purchased some that from out of the state, I think it was from Canada that had been purchased. And some had also been purchased from Diablo. But there, like I said, the majority said no, they didn't want any nuclear, so there's no nuclear involved in that. Okay, next item is appointments. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title and give the staff the report?
Yes, the city council will consider making appointments to the Block Grants Advisory Committee and direct staff to continue advertising the various boards and committees that still have vacancies. The Block Grants Advisory Committee has three terms to fill, ending in July of 2023. Three new applications were received prior to the printing of the agenda from Mr. Corey Armstrong, Isaac Burman, and Jose Aguilar Galvan. And two additional new applications were received after the printing deadline from Mr. Samuel Duarte and Ms. Yvonne Teniente. On October 19th, staff did receive an email from Mr. Aguilar Galvan requesting that his application be withdrawn from consideration. Mayor Patino, Councilmember Cordero, and Councilmember Soto will each have the opportunity to make one nomination for a term of three years. Following the nominations, the appointments are to be made by Mayor Patino with ratification by the city council.
Okay, and I have since had communications with Mr. Galvan, and he is going to still be, have his application or submittal. And Councilmember Cordero, would you like to make a nomination?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I would like to share with you that I spoke with all five of these applicants and several of the references for both of them. And, well, I'm not really sure the reason why. I can only assume that Rosie has something to do with it. I have never, in my time with the council, had so many highly qualified people for one of these kinds of appointments, and I'm truly impressed with the community stepping up and coming forward. Having said that, I would like to nominate Corey Armstrong for this position. He comes very, very well supported by his references. There's a gentleman by the name of Mike Martinez, and I didn't know that until I spoke with him on the phone, that my wife and I had something to do with him joining up in law enforcement. He worked for the school district, and many years ago, I don't really remember the incident, he rode around on a citizen patrol ride, and that went from one step to the next to the next, and now he's a full-time law enforcement officer and a chief of police. And he thinks very, very highly of Corey, and so I'd like to nominate Corey Armstrong for this position.
Thank you. Mr. Watson, shall we each make a nomination, and we can do it all in one?
I think that would be probably the most efficient.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Soto?
I would like to move forward with nominating Yvonne Teniente to CDBG.
Thank you, and I will nominate Jose Aguilar Galvan.
Second.
And so we'll have all the nominations and the motion.
Second.
Your second, okay, to the block grants. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Thank, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Thank you very much for all of you that have volunteered to be on the boards and committees. Certainly appreciate your time and effort. Sometimes, like you said, Mr. Cordero, we have a lot of people apply, and then sometimes not that many. So, anyway, but thank you. Next, we'll have a public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city council will consider the 2020 capital improvement plan for the 2020 growth mitigation fee program and set the 2020 growth mitigation fees.
Staff report is to be made by the Public Works Director, Mr. McKeon, and Principal Civil Engineer, Mr. Bayes.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers.
Wait.
Oopsie.
Go ahead with your report, I'll get started here in a second.
Okay, well, I kind of need the slides to start us off.
I'm not sure what happened here. Oh, he pushed it. Is that, okay, hold on one second. Okay.
My name is David Bayes, Principal Engineer in the Engineering Division of Public Works, and I'm pleased to present to you the growth mitigation fee update for 2020. The California Mitigation Fee Act, AB 1600, was enacted in 1987 to provide a way for communities to mitigate the impacts of growth. The growth mitigation fee program was adopted by the City of Santa Maria City Council in This program provides the city of Santa Maria an orderly way to build citywide infrastructure. It provides the development community a clear and simple way to mitigate off-site impacts of a development. This update provides an overall reduction in traffic fees, a 50% reduction in traffic mitigation fees for the downtown-specific plan area for restaurants, wineries, and breweries until December 31st, 2023. Construction cost index, increase of projects proposed on the program of 3.5% to keep projects current, cost current. The growth mitigation fee update process, what did it entail? It entailed a program update of all the programs. There are nine components, which I will go into in just a bit. Inflated proposed projects, as mentioned earlier, by a construction cost index of 3.5%. 3.5% is since the last update in 2017. And an update of land use data, what has happened since the last update, what has been built. During this process, we considered stakeholders' input. We invited the stakeholders, developers, developers' representatives, and we held four workshops, one in September 25th, 2019, October 17th, 2019, January 16th, 2020, and September 17th, 2020. The big gap, COVID. And at our last meeting, we held a virtual meeting, so we had a bit of a gap in between. And here we are before you tonight for city council review and consideration. As mentioned earlier, there are nine components of the mitigation program. Consolidated corp yard, city hall, library, police, fire, traffic, water, wastewater, and recreation and parks. And I'll go into each of those components individually. The detail, excuse me, update details. The program was updated. Project costs for each of the projects unbuilt were increased by 3.5%. Completed projects were not inflated and moved to the completed list. And I've mentioned land use data, what has happened since the last update as far as development? The consolidated corp yard and city hall, there were no changes to these projects. There is no changes to the projects for these components. Library, no changes. The police department, there is an update. The update includes a project added to identify land needed for the police department parking lot expansion. Fire department, no changes. Traffic, there were some changes. The update includes moving the following projects to the completed list. Blosser roadway improvements, Cook to Donovan. College Drive roadway improvements, Battles to Betaravia. Donovan Road interchange operational improvements. Miller Street, right-of-way from Stoll Road to Robel Street and from Alvin to Chapel. Interchange project cost amendments. This is, this update was in conjunction with the SB CAG staff to update the Mezzerrari projects, both of which US 101 Broadway interchange and the US 101 McCoy Lane interchange are a part of. Roadway widening, State Route 135 Broadway, specifically the area between Santa Maria Way and Union Valley Parkway, right-of-way costs were reduced. An addition of a project, traffic signal at College Drive and Mehan Street. This was at the request of the Santa Maria Benita School District. Projects moved to the suspended list. This is a new item. A Street roadway improvements, McCoy to Stoll. Alvin Avenue roadway improvements, Courier to Miller. And traffic signals, Black and Olive Wood and Depot, Fessler, and Railroad. Now, these, the suspended list was a result from feedback from the workshops that we had with the stakeholders. And essentially, the suggestion that was, which staff considered was, let's take a look at these projects during the general plan update and the circulation element.
I have one question. When we talk about the addition project, the College Drive and Mehan Street, did you discuss the College Drive and, the College, okay, that is Mehan, okay?
Yeah. It's right where the, an effective liberal clarification, that's where the Bill Libin Elementary and the Eastern Apartment.
And it's right in that cross?
Right where the cemetery driveway is at, in that proximity.
Okay. I thought you had it right where the crossroads were, right there at the school and the apartments.
Yeah, at that.
And not at the college, okay.
Yeah, at that general intersection.
Ms. Waterfield, excuse me, can you talk into your microphone so we make sure this is recorded? Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the water and wastewater component, projects were updated per the 2012 utility capacity study. Recreation of parks, an update included amending the park construction project, sports complex Tier 2, revised the original 50-acre project to 25 acres, and this was a part of the proposed development for the AcuStapachi development that's bounded by Blosser, Battles, Stoll, and the railroad. There's a soccer complex that's proposed in that general area. This slide shows an example of a, of what was, what would be for a 2,000-square-foot single-family residence. Now, 2017, the typical fee, which included the core growth mitigation component, water and sewer connection, in 2017, that fee was approximately $24,752. The new fee is proposed to be $21,793, a 12% reduction. Looking globally, not globally, but generally in the area, the, it's a little bit tough to read, we took a sample of similar cities nearby, Orchids North, Santa Barbara County North County Orchid, Beelton, Solvang, Lompoc, Santa Maria, Golida, San Luis Obispo, Carpenteria, and Paso Robles. And you'll see that the city of Santa Maria is right in the middle of it. We're not the highest, and we're not the lowest. Oh, shoot. I mentioned earlier the downtown-specific plan. In 2017, the city council approved a 50% reduction of traffic mitigation fees for the downtown area, downtown-specific plan area, to help promote growth for restaurants, wineries, breweries. This update proposes to renew that and extend it to December 31st, 2023. And this coincides right about when the general plan is proposed to be completed. Effective date of new fees, if supported by the council, the fees are effective 60 days following the passage and adoption by the city council. Calculations of fees determined upon approval of the development project, residential subdivision fees are assessed at the time of building permit issuance, and the payment of the fees are due at occupancy. Staff recommendations. Adopt a resolution approving the growth mitigation capital improvement plan and renewing a 50% reduction in the traffic mitigation fees for the downtown-specific plan area for restaurants, wineries, and breweries until December 31st, 2023. Introduce an ordinance for the first reading, and continue to a future meeting for a second reading and adoption of an ordinance revising, setting the 2020 growth mitigation fee program. And this concludes staff's presentation.
Ms. Waterfield?
I have a question. You talked about the 12% reduction in a 2,000-square-foot, is that a single-family home?
Correct.
Okay, how are the townhomes or condos of that size, are they going to be, are they going to have reduced fees as well?
Yes.
They will?
Yes.
So anything that's 2,000 square foot?
Well, for the, when you mentioned townhomes and condos, those are in the multifamily.
Mm-hmm.
Well, for the, when you mentioned townhomes and condos, those are in the multifamily section, and those are maxed out at about 1,500. Usually, your condos don't go that, aren't that big. But yes, overall, in response to your question...
And what about apartments? Because we were...
Same thing.
Same thing? Okay. Okay, thank you.
There's an overall reduction.
Oh, fantastic. Thank you.
Dr. Moats?
Well, I got out my little calculator, started adding up these growth mitigation fees, and I came up with a 2,000-square-foot house that's going to generate nearly $60,000 when you add everything up, like state water reimbursement fee, building permit fee for the schools from K to 8, $6,000, for the schools from 9 to 12. So, it costs a lot of money.
It's not going to be easy to shovel any dirt.
You're correct. And the numbers that were provided, because we use a comparison of other municipalities, we wanted to compare apples and apples. But you're absolutely correct. There is a state water reimbursement fee that other municipalities do not have, and the school fees vary from jurisdiction to jurisdiction.
So, how does Paso Robles get away with charging so much money for their mitigation fees?
Their council approved it. I essentially just looked at what their fees are and compared them, again, apples and apples. I can't tell you how they got it approved, but you can see that there are other jurisdictions that are higher than the City of Santa Maria.
What does the development community think about these fees? Are they happy because they're reduced?
We did have these stakeholder meetings, and at our last meeting, which was a virtual meeting, and actually, we had a couple, well, at the last meeting, we felt that we had consensus with the development community. And I see Glenn Morris here from the chamber, who was a part of these meetings, and I believe Lori Temura is on the line and is proposed to speak on this item. But I believe we do have consensus of the development community.
Ms. Soto?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was confused with the slide that you showed where the acreage was reduced for one of the parks. Can you go back to the slide and break that down for me, or go over it again really quickly?
Yes, absolutely. And I believe our Recreation of Parks Director, Alex Posada, may be with us as well. But this was a part of the stakeholder meetings that we had, and Alex Posada is the Director for the Recreation of Parks, and he oversees the parks projects. So, the development community had asked him, can you take a look at these projects, and is there any way to amend any of these projects? Alex took a look and identified the Sports Complex Tier Two. And originally, it was a 50-acre project and revised it to 25, as shown. And the thought was, and if Alex is available, he can chime in, that, so that it coincides with the soccer complex that's proposed at the Acuastapachi area, I believe it's Area 5B.
And this amendment is to this park, not the one for future development on Blosser?
That's Acuastapachi.
Right, okay. So, is this for the Acuastapachi, or is this another park?
It's for a portion of it.
Okay, so, it is that part?
Yes, yes.
Okay, yeah. I'd be curious to hear from, I'd be curious to hear from Mr. Posada as to how he was a, how he came up to 25, reducing it 25 acres.
Okay.
Mr. Posada has logged off.
Oh.
Is he trying to get back in? Okay.
Essentially, if I can add just a bit here, that when we have these stakeholder meetings there, and Alex can add to this, is, again, projects were looked at, what's needed for future development, and is there any way that, is the 50 acres essentially needed? And looking at how projects are developed, again, as the Acuastapachi Area 5B, is it necessary to have all the 50 acres or a component of that? And so, there's a little bit of, I wouldn't say give and take, but just some adjustments to that.
Madam Mayor, when we looked at the Acuastapachi project and we saw the acreage of the Sports Complex, was that the full 25 acres we saw?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
It's a portion of it. The Tier Two, what the Tier Two is, it is scripter of a, I'll give an example...
If Lori's on the line, she can probably, Lori Temura?
[inaudible]
Okay, fantastic.
Do you want to chime in?
Yeah, we see a question. Thank you, Councilmember Soto. So, yes, when we presented the Blosser Southeast Area 5B project, that was around 25 acres, and so, that's the total area for that park.
Go ahead. Do you want to ask Mr. Baez any question?
Well, that's a big reduction in acreage from 50 to 25. Now, there's four soccer fields, I think, on the 25 acres. Could be about eight soccer fields on 50 acres. I mean, wouldn't that be good for the community? And if the 25 acres is taken out of soccer fields or recreation, what is it going into? More houses, or what?
Well, I was hoping that Alex, Mr. Posada, would chime in. Again, as mentioned earlier, this is a component...
We'll have Mr. Posada on.
And Madam Mayor, I believe we just approved the second proposal for the Acuastapachi tonight, so we've already approved that.
Yeah. So, I'd like to open up the public hearing. And so, Madam Clerk, we have people request to speak.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do. And I believe the first speaker we have is Ms. Temura. I'm trying to get back my screen, and so, Lori, are you there? Lori, are you, can you hear me now?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. Somebody had to unmute me.
Sorry.
Yes, thank you very much. I would like to first thank the city staff. This was a long process, but I think it was very thorough and very much appreciated by the development community in the efforts that staff took to hear what we had to say as well as refresh some of the assumptions that were part of the developer fee program. I am a strong advocate of this program. The City of Santa Maria has been very successful over the last 25 years since the adoption of the Sphere of Influence and Annexation Program to have not only the city be a partnership in development, but also the development community. And that's the success of Santa Maria, is that partnership. So, I appreciate the work that city staff has done and all of the departments, and I'm here today speaking from the development side. We're very much in support of the program as presented here tonight. And I'm available for any questions.
Madam Mayor, we also have Mr. Grogan on the line. Mr. Grogan, did you wish to speak to the City Council on this item at this time? Okay, he's raising his hand. Mr. Grogan? Hello?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you for this opportunity. I want to thank Kevin McCune and David Baez about the addition of the signal at Meehan and College Street. It will greatly reduce the walking distance for about 285 students that will hopefully this year be coming into the school, actually. When the council approved the Enos Ranch West Project and the walking path from Driftwood Gardens, that greatly reduces the distance students in Driftwood Gardens and the surrounding neighborhoods would walk to school. And I work on all these issues for the district, and it will reduce busing probably by about 10 bus trips a day, which will improve student safety and the traffic in and out of the Enos Ranch. The signal was planned for in the approvals of the Enos Ranch subdivision, but was not funded. The other signals were, you know, the other signals at Meehan and Bradley, and, you know, all the other signals around. But it was called for in the plan, so this would complete that and greatly enhance student safety and reduce bus traffic and parent driving to school traffic. And if you've been to one of our schools, which are large, you know, that's an issue. So, I was thankful for staff coming up with this idea and how to get that signal put in.
Madam Mayor, we've had no written communications on this matter, and it doesn't appear that there are any other requests to speak at this time.
Okay. Mr. Posada, there were some questions for you. Thank you, thank you for being here.
He's not what it's all cut out to be, I'll tell you. Thank you, Councilmembers.
You mean you didn't jump into a time machine or something?
I felt like that's kind of a Star Trek, a transporter and get here, yeah. Thank you, Councilmember Soto for the question, and Mayor Patino, Councilmembers. So, we've got to go way back in history on that specific plan, and one of the items that was in that specific plan was a school, a park, and a community center, which was to be the Performing Arts Center. So, when all those plans were originally developed, our total gross acreage on that site was 25 acres. So, and the reality has come true now, the school district needs a little bit more room. We're not building a community center or a community theater, so that left us with about the 19 acres that we have available in the Acuastapachi project. So, it's enough to, in our plan anyway, to build four new soccer fields, combining them with the four that we have across the street, excuse me, at Adam and Manami. So, that will serve as our complex area. So, that's kind of where the numbers came from. So, it really wasn't giving up acreage, it was that specific project was just overbudgeted for land. Thank you.
Thank you. Did anyone else have a question, Mr. Posada? Okay. Any other questions for anyone here?
Madam Mayor, if not, I'd like to make a motion.
Well, I have to close the public hearing first, bring the item back to the council. So, I will close the hearing, and no further discussion at all? Okay.
I just want to say thank you to the staff for holding these meetings and involving developers, and it's good to see everything come together so nicely where we can all have consensus.
And it's nice that we don't have to attend those meetings, too. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Waterfield, you made a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the Growth Mitigation Capital Improvement Plan and renewing a 50% reduction in traffic mitigation fees for the downtown-specific plan area for restaurants, wineries, and breweries until December 31st, 2023, and introduce the first reading and continue to a future meeting for a second reading and adoption on ordinance revising, setting, the 2020 Growth Mitigation Fee Program.
Second.
Okay, and I won't repeat the motion because I would get it wrong, but, so, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing done. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye.
Next, we have a regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will consider the renewal of the Santa Maria Valley Tourism Marketing District, formerly known as the Santa Maria Tourism Improvement District, and allow public input regarding the renewal and levy of assessments therein as set forth in the Resolution of Intention adopted September 15th, 2020.
Thank you. And Mr. Morris will be giving that presentation. Good evening, Mr. Morris.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Don't really have a formal presentation today. This is one of the required steps in the renewal process. For you all, this is the second, one of the last two steps in this process. Tonight's agenda item is simply to provide members of the public the opportunity to make comments about the plan, and then in two weeks, it'll be back before you for a formal public hearing. I would just want to bring you up to date on our progress with the remainder. As you know, part of the renewal process this year is to expand the boundaries to include portions of the unincorporated county, particularly Orchid, and the City of Guadalupe. That requires both the county Board of Supervisors and the council in Guadalupe to adopt resolutions allowing for, or requesting that their businesses that would be under the assessment be allowed to participate in the city's program. Those agencies both took those actions last week, and so, we're on course to complete the renewal at the public hearing in two weeks. So, happy to answer any questions that you may have as we move forward through this. But again, the intent tonight was simply to provide members of the public a chance, if they wished, to make comments for your consideration as part of next week's, or your next agenda item.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? No questions?
There you go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak or written communication?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
Okay, I'll bring this item back to the council for any further discussion. Nope, there's no motion, so. Pardon? Yeah. Okay, we have another regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will receive an update on the city's general plan.
And Mr. Ing? Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We have an informational update and presentation on the general plan. As you know, late last year, the council authorized a contract to engage in the general plan update. I want to introduce the team that's been involved. Our Planning Division Manager, Ryan Hostetter, is the project manager for the general plan update. Dana Eady, Principal Planner, is also here. She's been working closely with the team. And we have our consultant team on the line, and Ron Whitmore of Ramey &amp; Associates will be providing a presentation regarding the general plan update. At the end of the presentation, we'll be here for questions. I want to make sure that the City Council has a clear understanding of what we've done so far, where we're at, and where we're going, and to provide a clear understanding of the next steps as there will be upcoming decision-making points for the council. This is one of several meetings that we'll have with the council in the next couple of years. So, with that, I hope Ron's on the line. I'll turn the time over to Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Ing.
Mr. Whitmore, can you hear us, and are you ready for your presentation?
Yes, I can hear you.
Yes, sir. Here you go.
Can I share my screen? Can everybody see the presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, thank you, thank you, Chen, thank you, Mayor Patino, honorable council members. Very much appreciate you providing us time on your agenda for this update. And as Chen mentioned, we really look forward to engaging you throughout this process, which, as you just heard through the previous presentation, is so critical to the city's future, both from a land use, as well as a financial perspective of economic development and general quality of life. As Chen mentioned, we'd like to give a very short presentation, give you a quick update on the status, give you a quick overview of the variety of community engagement activities that we've undergone so far, a very high-level summary of the existing conditions work we're doing, and then take those two together to share with you. and then take those two together to share with you some of the high-level assets and opportunities that we're hearing from community and learning about through our existing conditions work. Really is a platform to address any questions that you may have and see if you have any additions to the themes that are emerging from our initial work. Stepping back for a moment, just want to remind everybody what, what we're really looking for as key outcomes from this general plan update. What's most fundamental is an active, engaged community. A good general, general plan must reflect the vision and values and aspirations of a community. And if we're truly successful by the end of the process, the community will feel a very strong sense of ownership for the plan. That requires building strong consensus about the general direction as well as consensus around key decisions that the community needs to make together around growth and character into the future. That consensus around growth, direction, and character then needs to be clearly articulated in very specific strategies related to level of service, infrastructure, facilities, and other city services. Has to accommodate, as you know, updated state laws related to housing and housing allocations. And then fundamentally has to maintain the very high quality of life that you enjoy in Santa Maria. Reserving people's health, equity, and building a strong, resilient community. Resilient not just from a hazard mitigation or climate adaptation perspective, but resilient economically as well. Plan also, at the end of the day, must be well synchronized and aligned with the existing planning and regulatory infrastructure. A good example was the mitigation fee that was presented earlier. But it also has to be a very user-friendly plan. Should be very easy for each of you as policymakers to pick up and clearly understand guidance provided for future decision-making. And the same is true for city manager and department heads, as well as residents, who also can play a critical role in plan implementation. High level, there are five phases to the general plan update. We're just now completing phase one and transitioning to phase two. Phase one really is a discovery phase where we learn a lot about the community through secondary research as well as hearing a lot directly from community members and other stakeholders. We then use that information to continue working with the community to establish guiding principles that serve as the foundation for the plan moving forward. Those guiding principles then help us develop alternatives for the future. And then we engage again the community in a process of considering the trade-offs associated with each of those alternatives, which are composed of different mixes of land use, investments in infrastructure, and other choices. A preferred alternative is then chosen, which becomes the foundation for a policy framework, which is really the outline for the general plan. And after that's approved, the complete general plan is then developed and taken through the CQ process and final adoption. Fundamental again to all of this is active community engagement during each phase of the project. What's important for everybody to understand is that fundamentally, the buck stops with you. City Council is the policymaking body for the city of Santa Maria and will make all of the interim as well as final decisions about the nature of the general. That being said, the process really starts from the grassroots. Project Team is really serving on behalf of all the stakeholders and staff in the city. Our job is to do good technical analysis, listen carefully to what people have to say about what they love about their place, what they'd like to see improved, and what specifically they think should be done. Create the Santa Maria they want for 2045. But at each step of the way, there is a sequential process that we go through, and it's demonstrated in this slide, which shows across the page the five steps that I introduced earlier, and notes that in each phase, we go through a basic three-step process. First, we engage the stakeholders, listening carefully to what they have to say related to that phase and educating them as appropriate to make sure they understand the context in which we're asking the questions. We then combine that with the work we do. We have a pretty comprehensive team of consultants and subconsultants with expertise in a wide variety of areas. And our job then is to integrate that together into recommendations that the city then considers. First, at the staff level, and then brought to Planning Commission for consideration, recommendation, and finally, to you for decisions. And the way we've designed the process is that we come to you at each critical phase of the project for a decision or affirmation that the products of that phase are appropriate and aligned with what you understand to be where the city would like to go. And we then use that as the foundation for the subsequent. We'd like to very briefly give you a sense of the preliminary community engagement that we've been doing. Again, the objectives for engagement are really to ensure that the plan, at the end of the day, reflects what the people of Santa Maria want to see. So it's very important that the input throughout the process be truly representative of the people who call, who call Santa Maria home. We do that by providing lots of options for people to engage and stay informed and maintaining as high a level of transparency as possible. And in the process, building a high level of trust among the stakeholders. We get feedback and very strategically requested feedback along the way and help people understand the processes we go, understand what decisions and input that they're weighing in on, what difference it makes at each phase, so that they can follow along and build their sense of ownership for the plan. And also see their role for implementation of the plan at the end of the day. We've done quite a bit so far, whole range of outreach and engagement. Did a whole round of stakeholder interviews during project kickoff. We then launched a project website in both English and Spanish. When we did the project launch and since then, we've done a number of press releases, utility mailers, social media blasts, distributing information through schools. We've also now met with the Planning Commission and the department heads. We also have a technical advisory committee, a group of community representatives who we use to advise us on community engagement and to help us ground truth, information, and analysis as we proceed. We've also engaged some community partners to reach some of the harder-to-reach communities in the community, help us work through their communication and engagement network. Just recently, we completed the initial round of community engagement through two sets of qualities and changes surveys, asking people about what they really love about Santa Maria as well as areas for improvement. And then using a mapping tool, inviting them to map specific assets as well as issues that need to be addressed. Mentioned the technical advisory committee. It is an advisory group, but they're really critical to the process. Fundamentally, they do two things for us. And it looks a little different at each phase, but fundamentally, they're helping us make sure that we're on the right track, that what we're hearing really makes sense for the context, what we're learning through the secondary analysis and research really makes sense. And also critically, help us adapt and design community engagement and outreach strategies that we use. Each place is different, and the approach to how you involve people in a planning process needs to be adapted. You'll recognize many of the names on this list. Some of the most active leaders and community members you have. It's a fantastic group of people to work with. The city staff did a fantastic job of helping us ensure that it's representative of the diverse mix of folks you have in Santa Maria. We've been meeting with them monthly for several months, introducing them to the general plan, getting, repeatedly getting their advice on specific engagement and outreach strategies. They've helped us with some high-level analysis of strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, and help us be clear about how it makes sense to analyze different sub-areas around the city. And we've been sharing them in the recent meetings some of the initial findings from our existing conditions reports, which serves both to help them learn more about the technical side of planning and about their city as well as, as well as to help us ground truth what we're finding through secondary data. Here's a snapshot of the two surveys that I mentioned earlier. And this is something we're really happy with. As I mentioned before, representation during engagement is really important. And so what we do is we track the demographics of people who participate. It's all non-personal information. We simply ask them to anonymously share with us things about their age and ethnicity. We use that then to compare it to what the census data say about the demographics of the community to help us make sure that who we're hearing from really represents an accurate snapshot of the current residents of this city. Very quickly, just wrapping up the existing conditions report, which are really a baseline snapshot of current conditions in the city, which serves as the foundation for the planning process. They're quite comprehensive. There's a detailed environmental report, assessment of infrastructure and your transportation systems, land use and community design, ECR that looks at sub-areas, and then a housing, economic, and demographic report. So taking those two things together, the initial community engagement as well as our findings from the existing conditions report, we've summarized some key themes that we're hearing that we're very interested in your feedback on as well. Everyone is on the same, there's very strong consensus in the city that it's a wonderful place to live and raise a family. The sense of community is rare among communities these days. And people really cherish that about your city. And there's something about the location, the character, the dynamic, like diverse economy, the affordability, that makes it a place, a great place to raise a family, which is foundational to that sense of community. People generally are very pleased with the status of city services and infrastructure, including the transportation system, as well as public services and safety. And again, really appreciate the diversity of economic opportunities people have across a broad range of educational level. There's also opportunities for improvement. As I mentioned earlier, resilience is top of mind for many people, and that's a multidimensional sense of resilience. People want to make sure that in the future, housing choice is maintained at a variety of price points and a variety of types of housing. People are interested in revitalizing downtown and speaking and addressing a range of issues related to the principal corridors. There's some land use compatibility issues that have arisen, both at the urban agricultural interface as well as the residential industrial interface. There are some traffic congestion issues to address and a lot of interest in continuing to improve the walking and biking infrastructure in the city. And obviously, Santa Maria being one of the fastest-growing cities in the region and is expected to continue that trend, people really are interested in being thoughtful about managing that growth and also mitigating the trend, the jobs housing trend that is headed probably in the wrong direction in terms of fewer jobs relative to the number of residents. As I mentioned earlier, we're transitioning to the next phase of the project, the visioning phase. So upcoming in November will be both the launch of a community workshop focused on visioning as well as another survey focused specifically on helping people, having people help us understand their priorities that need, that then become the guiding principles for the general plan. And then we'll be coming back to you early next year with a draft set of guiding principles and looking for your approval and affirmation of those as the foundation for the subsequent steps. Again, we wanted to keep this short and high level, very open to questions you may have about the process so far, and also very interested to see if you're hearing anything different from your constituents related to the assets people value about Santa Maria and the opportunities they see for the future. Chair, Mayor Patino, I'll bring it back to you.
Thank you, thank you. Any questions from the council? None? This is a no-question night. Oh, thank you very much. Great.
Madam Mayor, we have one request to speak this evening. It appears Lori Tamora has her hand raised on Zoom to speak. Would you accept her?
Sure.
Lori? Mr. Tamora?
How's this?
There you go.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
So I want to thank the city of Santa Maria and the work that the consultant is doing, moving this project forward. And the conversations that we've had with the TAC have been productive. We still, I think there is some concern that we don't know exactly where the project for environmental review is going to go, particularly in regards to annexations and future uses outside of the current city boundary. And so we're hoping that in this next round of work that the consultants are doing, that we start looking at where those growth areas are outside of the current city, knowing that we're pretty much built out and we need to plan for 35,000 to 40,000 people in the next 20 to 25 years. So I'm hoping that, that effort is still on the table, and it's still a goal of this project to look at those future annexations. So thank you very much and keep, I really appreciate being involved in this and I look forward to continuing workshops.
Thank you, Lori. Appreciate that. Any comments, questions? Anyone else there to speak, Madam Clerk?
No, Madam Mayor, there's no one else.
Any written communications?
No, Madam Mayor, there are no written communications.
So I just bring it back to the council for any discussion.
I have one comment.
Oh, yes, Ms. Waterfield?
I'm sorry. And maybe I'm wrong on this one, but I went to the website Imagine Santa Maria, and I'm looking at engagement summaries, the stakeholders' interviews, and other pictures that show a picture of a city. And I'm trying to figure out, this isn't Santa Maria. And my only comment is, is that if we're paying people a lot of money to do this, they should at least use a picture of the city of Santa Maria. And if I'm wrong, I apologize, but I can't find this where we are. So that's just my comment.
Thank you. Mr. Ing?
Yes. Mayor, customer water, thank you for your comment. We'll pay attention to that.
Yeah, definitely.
So a couple of things. In response to Ms. Tamora's comment, Ron had laid out where we're at and where we're going. So let me kind of reemphasize that again. The next step, we're going to articulate an overall vision and with some guiding principles. That's kind of a statement of who we want to become, of what we want to become in the next 30-plus years. After we articulate this vision and guiding principles, we're going to begin to explore different growth alternatives. And that's what Lori's hinting at. How are we going to accommodate 30,000 people, 10,000 jobs? And this is based on projections provided by SB CAG in the regional transportation plan going out to 2040 or 2045. And so there's, there will likely be several ways in which that could be accommodated. As, as we know, that could be done through infill, through density, or through expansion, or some combination of both. And part of the general plan process is to explore different scenarios, contrasting scenarios that could accommodate future growth. That's going to happen in what we consider this third phase of plan alternatives. And so there's decision-making points for the council. So the council will be involved in selecting a vision statement with guiding principles. The third step being plan alternatives. At some point, out of three or four alternatives, there will be a preferred alternative. So the preferred alternative would then drive the goals and policies that come in step four. So that's what we're looking at as far as 2021 is concerned. There's some other steps further down the line that takes some time, such as. There's some other steps further down the line that takes some time, such as the EIR. And there's statutory requirements for public review periods that kind of extend the timing a little bit more down the line. So I wanted to give the council some clarity on what's coming up next. I do want to mention that Ron, part of our consultant team, is looking for some comments from the members of the council as far as things that you are aware of, as far as issues and opportunities are concerned regarding the city of Santa Maria. So this is an open comment period for the members of the council to provide input now for our team to compile.
And Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Stillwell.
I'd have been, obviously, talking closely with you, just to reiterate what Mr. Ing said. So the goal is for us to really keep this front and center with the city council, as you being the policy leaders of this whole effort of the city. And as part of the conversation transition to what Chan just mentioned, some of the points that you've raised in the past that I think relate to this project are making sure we have enough jobs for the people who live here. And so as we're looking to the future of Santa Maria, where would we place those industries? What type of industries would we look for? Obviously, then another housing mix. I've heard the council mention a different housing mix would be good, maybe smaller housing where people don't have cars, but also bigger, more executive housing, and where would those be? Water is a big issue, at least council member Waterfield, for all of the council, but council member Waterfield being on CCWA is how do we address our water needs, both with the supplemental state water and with nitrification of our existing water, and how do we plan for that? As Mr. Ing just mentioned with the regional housing needs assessment, the state's mandating somewhere like three times the growth that we've had to accommodate in the past, and probably three times of what we act, or at least double of what we actually do grow by. So that's going to be a big hurdle for us, not only to try to put in that much housing into a plan, but what does that mean for the schools, the roads, more jobs, you know, the water, the additional things? We've had a lot of conversations over the years with adjacent landowners, whether it's in the southeast part of town, you know, just adjacent to the city, where there is some development on the Elks Rodeo area. We just, last week, was working with the Board of Supervisors for a road connection there. So there are things right around our area and in our sphere of influence that impact us, and how does that relate to Santa Maria in the future? Does it become part of our sphere of influence, or just something that's adjacent to us? And then there's always been conversation by the council of the airport and what the airport's role in this growth of the future of Santa Maria is. And so I think as we kick off the discussion, as Mr. Ing mentioned, we do want to have, obviously, council engagement on this, which we have and will continue to bring it back, but also if there are other, any, any other particular issues that the council would want to add at this point. But as, I've been keeping a list, as does Mr. Ing, of issues that you bring up and raise over time that we, those are some of the ones that I have on the list, at least at this point.
And Madam Mayor, with everything that Mr. Stillwell just indicated, we have to start talking about annexation now, and where we're going to go and start that paperwork getting, because with everything that we just discussed, we're going to have to incorporate more land into the city of Santa Maria to do that. And as we know, that's going to take time, and we've got to be able to do that. I know that, we always talk about the city of Santa Maria and its contiguous land that has to be accepted and gone through, but you know, we forget about, we have city property at Prow Road that is, you know, that could be contiguous out there as well, to incorporate that into the city of Santa Maria. So those are just thoughts that I've just thought we would discuss maybe at a later time, or when we do our yearly get-together to discuss that.
Ms. Soto?
I think he had his hand raised first.
Dr. Moats?
Now, I'm just thinking in the SWOT analysis, this is a threat. I've been told that there may well be some form of organized resistance in the South County who are annexing the land around us. So we may decide, our general plan, we want to annex a whole bunch of land to the east, but we may not be able to. I mean, don't we have to convince about two or three organizations that it's a good idea? Clafco and Board of Supervisors?
Yes, yes.
You know, Board of Supervisors isn't interested in keeping power in the South Coast, and you know, if we're going to have 40,000 more people added on to 110,000, that gives us 150,000 people just in the city of Santa Maria. And you know, that would overwhelm South Coast, and they don't want to do that. So I consider South Coast politicians a threat.
Well, I'll just wave my magic wand, and we'll just get rid of them. How's that? Ms. Soto?
Thank you. Well, I just want to say that I'm really happy to hear that we're going to be focusing first on a vision, creating a vision. And what was it, a principle, like a mission statement, like a vision and mission statement?
Guiding principles.
Guiding principles. I think that that's, that's an excellent first step before we, before we start talking about, you know, annexation and all of these other issues. I think, I think that's a great way for us to, to all be on the same page as to what our ultimate vision is for, for our community. I really appreciated seeing the, the strengths and opportunities for growth that were listed in your presentation. I know you were asking for comments, so I feel like a lot of what's up there are things that I would have said. Definitely, the housing choice is a big one and definitely key, and so I was happy to see that. In addition, I was happy to see, you know, that transportation and public infrastructure was seen as a strength, but also as an opportunity for growth. I've always said that the city of Santa Maria is the best city to bike, to bike, because we are flat. And so now just making sure that we are able to increase the different types of modes of transportation that folks can use, whether it be by walking, bicycling, or ink, or beefing up our, our public transportation infrastructure and routes and whatnot. And I think that that's also key when we're talking about annexation and growth. How are we going to make it so that residents who may not have access to reliable transportation be able to go from one end into another? But something else that is of concern to me is, as we're talking about growth, and also seeing where we're at financially at the, in the city of Santa Maria, my concern is really about sustainability. And can we afford to grow at such a fast pace if we're already having challenges with keeping the services and the level of service that we have now? And so once you pave a road, you can never unpave it, right? It's ours for a lifetime, which means additional costs to our city. And so definitely having conversations about how can we increase revenue in order for us to be able to sustain additional services that require, that are required with growth.
Thank you. Dr. Cordero, Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for the promotion. Everything that everyone has said is, you know, I would agree with, particularly with what Dr. Moats says, there will be some resistance from South County. I think those of us that have been around a while certainly realize that. And just to add to that, and I'm sure if we all sat here long enough, we'd think of this ourselves, but most of the property east of us is prime ag land, and there's some added issues in acquiring prime ag land and turn it into part of the urban community. So, so we've got a lot of challenges ahead of us in the next several years, the next 10 years are going to be very interesting for this council in how to meet these, these growth needs in a sensible way, like Ms. Soto was saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, yes.
Question. In terms of the prime ag land to the east of us, isn't it true that they've taken it out of the Williamson Act in anticipation of it being annexed and urbanized? Is that true?
I don't, I don't know personally if that's true.
I don't know.
But it's still prime ag land, and I don't know that taking it out of the Williamson Act is going to influence the fact that it's no longer prime ag land. Those are things that we would have to ask and answer, and I'm sure that somebody listening in, like Lori, or somebody would be very, very educated in that area, but.
But it would suggest that the landowners anticipate eventually converting it into something other than ag. Because it takes like 10 years to get out of there.
Takes about 15 years to get it out of the Williamson Act. Yes.
I would assume that if Proposition 15 passes, they'll want to sell that ag land.
Well, you know, I can remember Mr. Santana, when he was sitting in this chair, talking about how we should have started annexing years ago and planned for Santa Maria, because we are going to grow, and Santa Barbara doesn't want to grow. And I think that, well, I just don't know how we can grow without annexations, because I don't want to see us stacking and packing people and warehousing people. When they want a quality of life, they want more than the way they live, maybe on the East Coast in apartments and stuff. Just not too long ago, I heard some man on the, on the, it was, I was listening to the radio, saying he was so happy he could take his three-year-old out and go to the park now, because of the COVID thing, that the park was open. And I'm thinking, how sad to raise children in an area that, and I didn't experience that when I was raising my own children, I could just put them out in the backyard. How sad that is to raise children and have to plan when you're going to take them out of the apartment and go down the street to the park. I think, you know, we all talk about better, higher-paying jobs, and trying to recruit companies to come in here that do pay higher salaries. Those companies that do come in are going to want executive housing for their employees also. So all of that is something that we need to take into consideration. And when you see the RENA numbers come out, for us, it's not just the low-income housing or the moderate, but also the higher-income housing, which I think is, it's a good mix that we have that. I think the governor, governor may be rethinking the amount of, of housing that we're going to have to take, and other communities in California are going to have to take. But I just think we really need to consider the annexation, and I think Santa Maria has done a good job in the infrastructure right now, in the way we're going. We've got the 1600, AB 1600 Vs, but just in things that we've done infrastructure-wise, and the way we keep up our streets and our roads, the sewer, everything that we have planned out there for, for build-out in Santa Maria, but this is really now going fast. And, and so something that we need to make sure that we keep up with. But we don't have enough housing right now. We have too many families living in one house, and so we really need, and it's, it's not a magic bullet. And I, I think about all the mandates that come down from the state that cost so much for us, not us, but developers to build housing, and that, to me, is a real barrier in, in providing all the housing that we need for a lot of young families. And thank God we've got people like the Housing Authority and people self-help housing that are filling a void that really needs to be filled right now. So I, I like all those, we've got so many resources here, we've got so many good things going on with Santa Maria. And all of that sort of comes together, and we make adjustments as we go along, whether it's transportation, the different modes of transportation, we have different types of housing that we are going to be needing, the schools that we're going to be needing. And I think a lot of people have done a lot of, lot of good planning, whether it's been the hospital and the city of Santa Maria. We've done a lot of good planning in our fire stations, our police department, and we've been very proactive in doing this for the long haul. But I think this is just a great exercise and very exciting exercise to go through.
I would agree with you.
I like men who agree with me. Ms. Soto?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I think something that sparked, something that was sparked for me as you were speaking, mainly to housing, I think that this is where having more housing choice, more of a housing choice is going to be critical. I was speaking to a resident who was telling me that she's just really concerned that her children will not be able to afford to live here. And her children are young professionals, because the, the income doesn't match, you know, the cost of housing, unfortunately, for a lot of young people, a lot of young families. And so definitely making sure that we're not perpetuating the cycle of cramming multiple families into one household by the type of housing that we continue to approve. So I think that that's really critical. But secondly, something else that I really want to point out that I didn't see noted is, I know that part of the, of the general plan is also zoning, and in looking at all of our zoning, and so I think I would really want to encourage us to be thinkers, think outside the box as to how we can be, how, when it comes to zoning. And the first time I really had to think about this was when we were in our downtown specific meeting, Councilwoman Waterfield, and we had that project, childcare facility project. And so it's, it's no secret that here and across the state of California, and even the nation, we are lacking in our human care infrastructure, right? When it comes to elderly care, when it comes to childcare, people with, with disabilities, you know, there's really a lack of, of a care infrastructure in our, in our communities. And so how can we support small businesses, small business owners who are wanting, are able to provide that care, that childcare? And, and again, seeing how we can accommodate our zoning to, to support childcare, because it's a big need. But also, going back to the small businesses, I constantly hear folks talk about the challenges that arise when, when trying to get, you know, their business permits and, and whatnot. And so finding ways in which we can also, not just streamline, but support all levels of entrepreneurship here in our community, not just the ones that we seem as deemed as, you know, high, high profits. And so I don't, oh, and then one other thing, education, that was not included, and so I was really interested, I was curious that that was not included in the areas of growth. Yeah, we need to, just finding ways in which we can support our educational school system is going to be critical. But then also find ways in which we can also support the nonprofit sector, because here in Santa Barbara County, we have one of the highest nonprofits per, number of nonprofits per capita. And so talking about how we can make Santa Barbara County, or even Northern Santa Barbara County, a hub for nonprofit sectors to also, you know, pump money back into our economy through that avenue. And so I know I said a lot, so.
Ms. Water, Ms. Waterfield?
You know, Councilmember Soto, I couldn't agree with you more in trying to help our businesses with, with what we possibly can help them with, but it starts with the state. It starts with a business-friendly state. And we have Proposition 15 on the ballot, and if that gets passed, then there's going to be a lot of businesses that are going to go out of business because of the tax structure. And so you're going to see another layer of people struggling. And I tell people it's so important that they come and they get upset with us because we can't make things happen for them, but it's because of the mandates that are given down to us from the state that start higher than us, and we're the lowest elected officials on the totem pole, so they need to be aware of what's going on, not only in the state, but in the federal, so that we can accommodate our business, businesses as much as we can. So that's, you know, that's something that is just very troubling.
I wrote a great op-ed on Sunday, that was published on Sunday, Prop 15. I highly encourage folks to read it.
I couldn't hear because of your mask.
I wrote an op-ed that was published on, on the Santa Maria Times on Sunday, on Prop 15, and. 15, and it exempts ag land, commercial ag land, and it also provides tax, certain tax benefits, reliefs for small businesses. And over 92% of the monies generated from Prop 15 would be coming from the top 10 highest-valued properties in the state.
Did you say it exempts commercial land?
Ag.
Commercial?
Ag land, yeah.
Ag land?
All ag land.
Okay. How about commercial land?
Um, yeah, so commercial ag land as well.
Well, okay, let's. Yeah. Are you even, yes, yes. It doesn't relate to this. It got, it got so interesting, you took your mask off. Okay. Any other, any other comments?
No, the attorney will get mad at us.
Nothing like an excited attorney. Yeah. Mr. Ing?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, if you don't, if the comments have been provided, I'd like to just take a few minutes and express some thanks. Ryan Hostetter, our Planning Division Manager, she is leaving the city, and she will be heading out to grander pastures, I think. And, but she's been heavily involved in major efforts for the city, whether it's the downtown street skate plan, getting us started on the general plan update, but a lot of behind-the-scenes stuff that most of us don't pay attention to. Upon her departure, we will have five planners, and four of them are hired within the last couple of years. And Ryan's been involved in the hiring of the four of the five planners and in training these planners and helping them participate in the review of development in the city. And this is a, you know, we always take pride in providing good service, even though we're a mid-sized city with small teams, not just our department, but many departments. And it requires good management and good leadership. And so I expressed my thanks to Ryan for doing that the last couple of years.
Thank you, and thank you, Ryan, very, very much. Very much appreciated. And where are you going?
Jackson Hole, Wyoming.
Okay.
So, yeah, we're, my husband and I are moving to the mountains. We're both avid skiers and rock climbers and mountain bikers, and we have very close friends that are basically extended family that are out there that we are very excited, they just had a baby, and I'm like Auntie Ryan, so I'm very excited to go out and be close to them and start, I'm going to be working for Teton County, Wyoming, a shared position between the county and the town of Jackson Hole, doing long-range planning for them.
That's a great area.
Yeah. Thank you.
Well, congratulations, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Very much appreciated.
And thank you all, and I just have to say, this, this team here at the city is just fantastic. The people here are fantastic to work with, and it's been so great working with the Technical Advisory Committee and putting that together on the general plan. We've been meeting monthly, and I think it's a great group of folks that are going to care, help carry this project forward. And thanks to Dana, who's stepping in, and it's going to be a seamless transition, and I'm excited to see her help carry this forward for the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You were right about the greater passengers. Wyoming is beautiful.
So at this point, we'll just receive and file the report? Okay? Thank you very much. Next item will be a report by the city manager, Mr. Stillwell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the city council. Two points of note. First, the, the next meeting of the city council is November 3rd. In endeavors to keep the agenda light as it's election night, we have two regular business items, looking at the new state law requiring vehicle miles traveled and the first quarter financial report, and two relatively, I think, short public hearings, the tourism management district protest hearing and a Tefra hearing for CHC. Another note is, you may have, you may recall from the COVID update at the last city council meeting, which even my mom said was too long, so I apologize for that. We did mention that there were small business grants that the city is partnering on with the Santa Barbara Foundation, and we've been able to extend the deadline for small businesses to apply for that. And those are businesses under $2 million of annual sales, and they can apply through October 28th now for assistance in helping them make it through the COVID era. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Now we'll have oral reports of council members. And Mr. Cordero, start with you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On the 7th, I did the Ben Hayes Show. On the 7th, 8th, and 9th, also, I attended virtually the classes with the Cal League. And if you happen to attend any of those, a couple of the very interesting ones were the situation that we're in with the PERS retirement, and that we're basically in the same boat with every community, or most every community in the state. And some other real interesting ones were how, how things are being treated regarding COVID. And on the 17th, I attended one of the sessions put on by the Parks and Rec with the park that we were talking about earlier tonight. And at first, I talked with some people over at the Parks and Rec with Cindy over there, and I wasn't too impressed with the idea that we're having something like this. And then when I, once I got to it, it was very informative. I think that's the way to go, and I, and I wrote her an email, like, what a concept. We're going to ask the public what they would like to see at one of these parks before the park is even, any ground broken. And so I think it's a great idea that, and I certainly hope that we're, we're able to, to get that grant. And I also think that since Mr. Passad is here, we probably ought to have the school district weigh in on this and, and maybe make some sort of a letter so that it, maybe it'll help with, with the grant, since there's two schools very close to this particular park. And that would be it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Cordero. Ms. Waterfield?
Ms. Soto? Just the League of Cities, the virtual sessions?
Thank you. Thank you. October 7th, 8th, and 9th, League of Cities, virtual. And on the 7th, I did, also did the American Breakthrough Dismantling Racism webinar, did the updated Santa Maria Key Leaders Call on the 8th, a legislative briefing call, which is usually, it's just all about the mayors and supervisors in the county and what we're doing with, with the COVID. October 9th, Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley Board Meeting and the Zoom meeting. On October 12th, I did the Mayor's Youth Task Force and did a Zoom meeting with about 15, 16 kids from Santa Maria High and Pioneer High School. On the 14th, I attended the North County Subregional Zoom Meeting. And on the 15th, SB CAG meeting, and we do those in person at the Board of Supervisors, and they did APCD Board Meeting in the afternoon, and the legislative call, which I missed because I was in APCD, and that evening I did a police council meeting. On the 16th, that was a good Zoom meeting. I spoke to Ms. Dolan's fourth-grade students at Adams School, and that was fun. That was the best Zoom meeting I've had in the six months I've been on this. October 20th, that was this morning, did the Ben Hayes Show this morning, and did the UCSB Econ Forecast Project Zoom Meeting of Dr. Rupert. And that's it. Any, anything else, Madias? If not, ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is adjourned.